All right, good afternoon. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. At this time, I'd like to call the January 11th, 2022 Planning Board Meeting to order. May I ask everyone to stand with us for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do any members have any conflicts of interest or disqualifications with respect to any of the items on the agenda tonight? And I myself do, so I'm not going to be voting on items A, C, or D. So we'll have a quorum of six people for item B and five people for A, C, and D. If I did my math right. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there is a change. The last item, E, PB 21-31, Gardner rezoning, has been withdrawn by the applicant.
All right. Well, I'm gonna go out of order with the items tonight, if that's okay with everybody. And I'm gonna do B first and then pass it over to Vice Chairman Owens to take over for the rest of the meeting and do items A, C, and D. So I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda with item E removed.
I'll make a motion to approve it, approve of the agenda.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is approved. Are there any changes to the December 14th, 2021 meeting minutes? Hearing none will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes as presented.
So moved.
We have a second, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes from December 14th are approved. We do not have any old business, so moving on to new items, I'll start with item B. Currituck County requests to amend the Unified Development Ordinance's definition of public infrastructure to include utilities regulated by the NC Utilities Commission.
All right. Thank you, Chairman. I will be presenting this item this evening. As you mentioned, it is a text amendment which would change the definition of public utility, and I will go into a little more detail here. First, I wanted to give you a background of where the amendment was initiated. It came out of a work session from the Board of Commissioners in September. The work session was in regards to the Foss development up in Moyoc, and specifically, they're connecting to the Eagle Creek wastewater treatment plant. As you know, the wastewater, Eagle Creek wastewater treatment is a private utility, and the developer, in order to expedite the approval process, was asking to put a performance guarantee onto that private utility, which our ordinance doesn't allow. Our ordinance specifically calls out "public." The definition of "public" is that it is county or state-owned. So after a conversation with the board, they asked the staff to come forward with this amendment. Next slide, Tammy. To get into a little more detail about performance guarantees and what I just said, a performance guarantee is really, it's cash or another guarantee provided by the applicant in lieu of the completion of public infrastructure or the installation of something that's required. So, you know, usually we use it for like a last layer of pavement or street trees. If it's something that isn't complete before they need the approval, they can put an assurance down to the county that says, you know, so we're holding money or whatnot, that they will complete it, you know, before they get issued the final CO. Right now, we have three performance guarantees. The first is for subdivision plans, and that is for public infrastructure. The second is public infrastructure for a site plan, and the third is private improvements, but those are only for a site plan. So the project I was referencing were private improvements for a subdivision plan, which didn't fit in. Next slide, Tammy. So here is the amendment at its core. It would add a sentence into public infrastructure, which right now is limited to infrastructure that is owned or maintained by the county or state, and it would add in that a, it could also be considered a utility that is regulated under the jurisdiction of the Utilities Commission, and, you know, as such, it would be regulated by the DEQ. So basically, it is regulated and enforced by the same agencies that a public infrastructure is. It would just be privately owned. So it would add that private element into that definition, which in turn would allow private infrastructure to be performance guaranteed, the way that public infrastructure is currently. Next slide, please. There are three related land use policies in regards to this. The first, WS1, deals with multiple options for future water supplies. The second, WS3, deals with utility extension policies and where utilities should be extended, and the third deals with packaged sewage plants, and I'll explain a little more how these are applicable in the next slide. Basically, based on these policies, the staff does recommend approval because what we feel this text amendment does is provides more flexibility and creativity in future solutions accommodating infrastructure needs and the areas that it can be served. You know, as the growth in Moyoc and elsewhere in the county, this would add whether the infrastructure wastewater, water, you know, whatever in the future happens, whether they're public or private, this opens the door for more creative solutions to meet the needs. And then I just wanted to note that although it is addressing a private utility, these private utilities are regulated by the same agencies that public utilities are. So the next slide shows the review standards for text amendments, and with that, I will field any questions.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Kemp?
So the Eagle Creek sewage system was regulated by the state?
Uh, yes.
It is regulated.
It is regulated. The current Eagle Creek, the Utilities Commission, North Carolina Utilities Commission sets up a rate structure, and then from the enforcement end, it is the DWR, which is a division of the DEQ, which does the enforcement. So when it's not performing, it's the Division of Water Resources that is the enforcement arm for that plant. And that is-
You've got two things going on. You've got rates established, and then you've got maintenance on the system.
Right. It's, you know, establishing the plant, the rates and the structure there, and then you have the operation of the plant. And both are state agency-run. Both, you know, those agencies work hand in hand.
The North Carolina Utilities Commission is what establishes the rate structure. They approve the rate structure, and they approve the service area. And they work in conjunction with the North Carolina DEQ, Department Environmental Quality and Department of Water, Division of Water Resources. Let me get all my acronyms correct.
Right, yeah.
And they're the ones that do the enforcement. They're the ones who check, you know, the wa, how well the-
The system's working.
How the system's working. And-
They'd have to work in conjunction because if they need more money to fix it, then the right people-
Then the, exactly.
All right.
So it's really just the wording that you, can we see that slide again of the wording change, the text amendment?
Yep. And that is, that's the core of the amendment. It just, you know, because without even saying "private utility," a public or a private utility can be regulated by the North Carolina Utilities Commission. So it just opens that-
Sure.
It broadens the scope, which we can address in our ordinance. Which, you know, diving a little further into the background with going, without going too deep, there are discussions with the board now about a public-private partnership or privatizing some of our wastewater plants. So that's another reason why the board has asked staff to move forward with this, and, you know, we don't know where that's going yet, but those discussions are continuing at the end of the month at the retreat.
All right. Does anybody else have any more questions? Further questions? All right. I'll open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this item tonight? Anybody? Nope. Okay. Close the public hearing. Any questions or further discussion? All right. Hearing none, I'll open the floor for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve PB 21-30. I move to recommend approval of PB 21-30, Currituck County text amendment to change the definition of public infrastructure because the request is consistent with the 2006 land use plan, because it allows for flexibility and creativity for infrastructure within the county. Policies WS1, WS3, WS7. The request is reasonable and in the public interest because it addresses a need for infrastructure solutions that will help accommodate the growth within the county in an efficient and responsible methods.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right. E got removed, so I'm gonna hand everything over now to Mr. Owens. And get out of your way. I don't know what he wants to speak on, but he signed up for the-
Okay.
Good luck.
We'll move to agenda item A, PB 21-29. I request to amend the Unified Development Ordinance to allow new campgrounds through conditional zoning approval in specified zoning districts and to revise existing language regarding the use of recreational vehicles.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. It's good to see you all this evening. So what, the issue we have before us tonight is new campgrounds. June of 2020, staff brought forth a text amendment to address existing non-conforming campgrounds, and after that, there was an evening with lots of public input, and after that meeting, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to look at language, investigate, research, and find out a way to allow new campgrounds to come into the county. With the 2013 UDO, campgrounds is not permitted use with, within Currituck County. It was removed as a permitted use, and all the existing campgrounds then became non-conforming campgrounds. This text amendment does not address existing non-conforming campgrounds. It would only, these are, this is, this text amendment would only address new, new campgrounds. And get that out there. This is, we have not, at this time, we have not been directed to take on non-conforming existing campgrounds. We may, and so we may be back with additional language at that time, but that's gonna be an endeavor, working with the existing campgrounds and the Board of Commissioners. So tonight, we're talking about new campgrounds. So the brief history, and in the staff report, you saw that we've had a contentious, at times, relationship with campgrounds here in Currituck County. We've had them, we've allowed them, then we haven't allowed them. So that history is in your staff report. Did I hit all the highlights? So we held, the Board of Commissioners held several work sessions, and the language that is presented to you tonight is, basically came straight from those work sessions with some staff input and research that we've done in regards to, in regards to campgrounds. So this text amendment would allow campgrounds through can do the conditional zoning process in certain zoning districts, and this language is also going to kind of clarify some language that's associated with, with campgrounds. You'll see what I'm talking about in just a minute, and update the definitions and some tweak some other languages necessary. Next slide, Tammy, please. Okay, so the first text, the first part of the text amendment would be to amend Chapter 4, which is our use table, and under 4.1.1, I know you can't see this very well, but this is the explanation of the use table structure, and this is in regards to prohibited uses. And there are two things here that are being changed. Under prohibited uses, it is under C, says use of a travel trailer, and we've eliminated travel trailer. We were gonna go through anything that's travel trailer, camper, we're going to just refer to that as recreational vehicles throughout the ordinance, and we've made those, those, those changes. So use of a deleting travel trailer, adding recreational vehicle as a permanent residence, or making that same change, deleting travel trailer and adding recreational vehicle as a temporary residence outside of an approved campground. So we're just changing that language to be consistent, and so it's not allowing the use of a recreational vehicle. You can't use an RV as a permanent or temporary residence outside of a campground, outside of an approved campground. Also, in this prohibited uses language, it says manufactured homes, manufactured home parks, and then we eliminated or private campgrounds as a principal use. Since we're now allowing them, we had to change this language. It's no longer, a new campground is no longer a prohibited use. So that language is gonna be changed so that we can allow new campgrounds. All right. So the next part of this amendment is to, is to modify the use table. And so under visitor accommodations, we were going to add private campgrounds as a conditional, and as a conditional zoning district in the agriculture, single-family mainland, single-family isolated, that's Knott's Islands residential zoning district, single-family mainland is our main residential zoning district, and general business. So in the work session, Tammy spoke about the conditional zoning that you're gonna consider later this evening. For a new campground to, to come in, they're going to have to go through a similar process of what they submit, and they're gonna have a development plan that's associated with that, and they're, it's a legislative act that can go through the Board of Commissioners. At this point, are there any questions about, about what we're, what this text amendment, where we're going with it? We're changing some language early on in the prohibited uses, and we're adding campgrounds to the permitted use table, through conditional zoning. All right. There's a lot to this, so I'm, I'm gonna be talking a lot. You're gonna see a lot of text. Please stop me if you have any questions. Let's see. And I've lost my place, because that's what I do. Because this is gonna be done conditionally, there are going to be additional requirements for new campgrounds as they come in. And in here, up here is the highlights, but if you want to go through, you know, page 15 of your packet, we have, you know, the exact language in here. And the private campgrounds are gonna have to come forward through a conditional zoning process, and they're gonna have to submit a development plan, a site development plan, and this development plan is gonna have to, there's some criteria that they're gonna have to meet. The first one is camping, we're back to camping is allowed use of land only in campgrounds and campground subdivisions. And the part, like, then the camping, the, the project must be under one parcel, must be on one parcel and under one ownership. Conditional zoning, you need it to be all on one, on property. Another big criteria, concern of the Board of Commissioners was, you know, we didn't want a campground be located through several residential neighborhoods or way back off the highway. So all new campgrounds must be accessed from a major arterial. Major arterials are gonna be Carrottoke Highway, Shortcut Road, and North Carolina 613, right, Tammy? The Knott's Island? Did I get the right? 615, okay. Another criteria is that it's going to, the par property has to be at least 50 acres in size. So there's another criteria that the Board of Commissioners wanted to put forward. A big one that I think is causing some consternation for people is that the, that no campground can be located within five miles of another approved campground. So that would be, so if you have one existing in, in lower Currituck, let's say in Point Harbor, then it's gonna need to be five miles north of that before the next one can be located. So there's gonna be a buffer in between campgrounds. The maximum number of campsites that's, that a new campground could have would be 500, with the maximum density of 12 campsites per acre. And we would not count KAMA or Army Corps wetlands in that, in the density. It can count where the project is a whole, but it can't be used in the density calculation. And then they would have the conceptual development plan that I was speaking of that goes along with the conditional zoning, and this is a list of all the things that they would have to show on that conceptual development plan. So any, all campsites, amenities, recreation areas, facilities, all those would have to be shown on this conceptual development plan. Okay, Tammy? Location and size of all storage areas. The campgrounds would be able to have a storage area. It can only be five acres or 10% of the, of the campground, whichever is less, so that they could store, if you're thinking they're camping, you need to store your boat, or the, you know, or something else, like specifically boats and maybe some RVs if you're there, short term. And the storage area, there is criteria for the storage area to be screened both internally and externally. We addressed the external in, in our, in our screening requirements in the UDO, and we've added language to screen it internally here with this, with this text amendment. You also need to, on this conceptual development plan, they need to show all their proposed infrastructure. So, go back, Tammy. A big one, a big criteria is that anything associated with the campground, any campsites, any facilities, infrastructure, all of that would need to be set back at least 100 feet from the property lines to lessen the impact on neighborhoods and on surrounding property owners. However, that can be reduced to 50 feet if we have, if they have a type D buffer, and D is our most robust buffer, and that is, it's gonna be, have to be opaque within five years, I think. It'd have to be an opaque buffer within five years. And then, if, so if you want to reduce setback, you have to do a more robust bu, more robust buffer. If, if you want to, if you don't want to do the, if you had to meet the standard 100-foot setback, you still would have to do a type C buffer, which is, you know, just not as intense, not as much planning that there, and we can, okay, now, now, Tammy. So we're only going to allow RVs, tents, camping cabins, alternative camping units are the only thing that are gonna be allowed in the, in the campground. And I have, I have a little bit, I have a few of those, some illustrations, some pictures. I got some pictures in my, in my, here in my PowerPoint here shortly. So the conceptual development plan would then have to give us the total number of campsites and the type of campsites, whether they're gonna be RVs, whether they're gonna be tents, whether it's gonna be cabins or other things. 20% of the campsites can be these camping cabins, alternative camping units, and 20% of those campsites can be seasonal. And we're gonna go through those definitions of what the seat, what those are in just a minute, so bear with me, please. I know I'm talking a lot. And there would be allowed to have one residential unit for either the owner or a full-time employee, a caretaker-type person that would be, that could be allowed to live on the, on the site. So here's an example of camping cabins. You know, I don't know, I've done a lot of camping in my life. These are little, I call them the KOA cabins, that, you know, we would be allowed to have something like that, and they can include little kitchenette facilities, maybe include bathroom facilities, but, and we'll go over the definition in just a minute about the cabins. But that would be, to give you an idea of what the cabin would be, and then, and Tammy, the next one. Yurts, glamping, and I think an eco tent or safari tent. These are things that I think have gained popularity in the last 10 years. See, that's how, my, I've got an 11-year-old, and I stopped camping like that when I got pregnant. I was too uncomfortable to sleep outside of my own bed. So I guess probably in the last few years, these things have gained popularity. So these are things that would be allowed in the campground, but they would have to have, show that designation on the, the development plan. Okay, Dan? So after the conditional zoning is approved, they would need to go through the major site plan process, and with the major site plan process, they would need to submit an operational plan, which then, another criteria would be, they would need to designate a 30-day closing period. We designated that between November and March, because, you know, typically our tourist season is more in the warm months. And in that operational plan, there'd be the total number of employees that are gonna reside on the campground during the season, and if there's gonna be any employees residing at the campground during their period of closure. Full-time residents other than employees are not allowed, or to be living, should not have any full-time residents living at the campgrounds. And the operational plan, if they want to come in and change their 30-day closing period from December to January, that can all be done administratively, as long as they are also there in compliance. And but they also must obtain a license from the county, but that's gonna be having amended, go through the, amend the county's code of ordinances in order to, to issue this license. That will be done through the county's code of ordinances, and, you know- And we've done this before with other businesses. And they would be required to have an inspection prior to either the issuance or the renewal of the license to ensure that there are no long-term residents and that they are meeting, you know, their site plan requirements, their conditional zoning approval, and any other UDO and code of ordinances. They would be inspected for that. Okay Tammy? All right. So, with the new use, we also have to worry about parking. So this is just amending now the parking, the minimum parking standards. And so, we require at least one spot per campsite, and then one visitor space for each 10 camping sites. And those visitor spaces can be throughout the campground, like at the office, your check-in, or if there's a rec center, they can have parking there, but they would need at least, you know, one visitor space sprinkled out throughout the site for each campsite. Let's see. And then we're getting into, thank you Tammy, to, we had to amend the chapter 10 definition, definitions and measurements, chapter. And the first place that we're going to amend is under 10.4.3, the commercial use classifications under visitor accommodations. We are adding private campgrounds to the examples. So our visitor accommodation, the example that says, use types include hotels or motels, bed and breakfast ends, and we're adding private campgrounds is the underlying language we're adding there. And then concluding sentence, in hunting lodges, that's there. So, the next thing, we're going to have to define some of these new terms that we're all seeing throughout this presentation. Alternative camping unit. And this, I borrowed from Dare County, because they've amended their travel parks, travel trailer parks, I think is what they call them, I think. But it worked well for us. So, alternative camping unit is a camping unit constructed of canvas or other similar material, not to exceed 400 feet in area, be intended to locate in a campground, uses temporary quarters, and it should not be used for permanent living quarters. So they do have to meet the applicable section of the building code. And it says, can include or not include kitchen and restroom facilities. But this alternative camping unit will include terms such as yurts, eco tents, safari tents, or anything like that. And if you guys know any other of these cool names that they're using for these alternative camping units, we can add those. For camper, we are deleting the definition for camper, is the structural language, and we're just going to say C recreational vehicle. For camping cabin, it will be a structure located in a campground, not exceeding 400 square feet, and constructed to North Carolina Building Code. Once again, they may or may not include a restroom, and they need to be compliant with our, you keep seeing that section, section 7.4. Those are, that's our flood damage prevention ordinance. So they have to be compliant with our flood damage prevention ordinance. I've also defined a campsite, a designated space for parking a recreational vehicle for the location of a camper cabin, alternative camping unit or tent, along with picnic tables, infrastructure, hookup pedestals, fire rings, and constructed platforms. And then recreational vehicle, I know that's very small, but you know, you have that in your packet. Recreational vehicle, we're deleting what's there, and we're consolidating the definition into a vehicle built on a single chassis, 400 square feet or less, and measured at the largest horizontal projection, designed to be self-propelled, permanently towable, designed primarily not for use as a permanent dwelling, but as temporary living quarters for recreational camping, travel, or seasonal use, fully licensed and ready for highway use that does not exceed 8.5 feet in width in transport mode, and of a size and weight that does not require special highway movement permit when towed by a motorized vehicle. So, that definition is changing, but like I said, it's consolidating. And, next slide please Tammy? So we're defining a seasonal campsite. So if somebody wants to, you know, come in and put their RV there for the entire season, this would be the definition. This is a campsite designated for use by campground guest for a period exceeding 30 days. So if you want to, I know a lot of people do that. They come down here, park their RV for the season, starting in the spring, and they come down, you know, whenever they feel like it, on the weekends. A short-term campsite would be the campsite designated for, designated for use by campground guest for a period of less than 30 days. And another thing is we are deleting travel trailer, the definition of travel trailer, and just saying C recreational vehicle, so that we can, all those terms will be defined by recreational vehicle. Okay. Any questions? Because I talked a lot and thrown a lot of information at you.
Do any members have a question from staff?
Yeah, and I'm going to go to the page number.
Okay.
Yeah. On page 15, okay. We've got the, and I put a question mark about the five-mile issue, which we talked about in the work session. But on page 16, there's two things. On Roman numeral eight, yeah, eight, where it says, no more than 20% of the total number of campsites may contain camping cabins and/or alternative camping units. Okay. It's my understanding that those are the units that would be subject to an occupancy tax.
That is my understanding as well.
Okay, so we are limiting that to 20% at this time?
Yes, at this time.
Second, I know that during the work session, you said that there were issues, people were concerned with traffic and everything. So by limiting, and when I'm dealing with traffic, I'm not just talking about volume, I'm talking about big RV units and campers coming down this corridor. So by restricting this to 20%, you're basically allowing larger units to be up and down this highway, in my mind, if I'm thinking correctly. And then Roman numeral nine, right underneath that, I don't understand that. What, a campsite shall be designated as seasonal or short-term, no more than 20% of the total campsites may be seasonal.
Yes. Well, I think-
They all were seasonal.
Well, I think seasonal, as far as how they, how the campground rents them out, leases them, my understanding would be like a seasonal would be someone would come down, park their RV, rent out a spot, rent by the month or for the whole season. And their RV stays there, and they just come down and treat it, you know, it comes down, it doesn't move, it stays in that spot.
Oh, okay, so no more than 20% would be like an RV that just sits there?
That just sits there, all season. Comes in, parks, and stays there all season, they don't move it until the campground closes.
Okay, I got it.
So, yeah.
And the season is considered, as long as the campground's open, is that what it is?
That would be, yeah, when the campground's open. They would be, you know, they would have that 30-day designated period, designated 30-day period when they would close, but other than that, that, you know, could be their season.
So when it's closed, there would be no RVs there?
That's the, that would be the, that would be how we would want this to happen, is that yes, there would be no RVs there when they're closed. Either they would be in storage, back at the owner's house, and they should not be on a site at the campground.
But the campground does have some of their own RVs. Sometimes.
And the cabins, are the cabins shut down for those 30 days too?
The cabin, I mean, the entire campground, they should not be taking seasonal or short-term guests during that 30-day period. Right.
Why 30 days?
It was a, it was a criteria that some of the members thought, some of the Board of Commissioner members thought would deter long-term or full-time residents from living there. If they're having to close down and pull their RV away, then they would be less likely wanting to try to live there. So, that was a 30-day. I mean, you know, if they want to close longer than that, you know, some places do, you know, full-on shut down and close for several months, that would be, they would be allowed to do that.
Does somebody inspect this, or somebody, who would inspect this to make sure they've closed down for the 30 days?
That would be, that would be our code enforcement division would be responsible for doing the inspections. This would be part of their license. This business would be regulated as well through the county's code of ordinances, where they would have to get a, some type of business licensure. And that would be, that's going to be the duty of the county attorney to craft that language. But prior to them being issued that license, or that license being renewed, it would be something that would probably be renewed every year, then they would need to make contact with the county, with county staff, and arrange for a time so that we can go out there and inspect that, to make sure there are no full-time residents, they're adhering to their conditional zoning approval plan, that they, you know, don't have more than 20% of the eco tents and the cabins, as they're, you know, to make sure they're hitting all those criteria. Now, we would be, you know, we do have the authority to go on there and make arrangements to go and do other inspections, but they would at least have that one inspection before reissuance, renewal, or issuance of that, the business license.
To revisit what Mr. Bass said, so the 20% deal, so if you've got 20% of it as camping cabins or safari tents or what have you, and then 20% seasonal rentals, so essentially 40%, that would, that would take up 40% of the campground, potentially.
It could, potentially.
And only leave, to discuss the traffic thing, only leave 60% of the campground open to regular traffic.
Big RVs, yeah. And I don't like to just keep beating a dead horse on this occupancy tax, but, but you keep talking about more code enforcement, more code enforcement, more code enforcement, well that costs money.
Yes.
And if, and I don't know how occupancy, I don't know how the statute works, you know, I don't know, I know it has a lot to do with marketing and things like that, but if you've got campgrounds, and you're getting some occupancy tax from those campgrounds, and you are having to continually send more code enforcement officers in there to enforce that it's actually a temporary campground, and maybe this is a question for the county manager, can occupancy tax pay for that? Or is our general taxes going to have to pay for that?
That would be a good question, because I know that-
Because it is, I mean, this is a big, you know, everything I'm hearing, there's a lot of personnel that is going to be involved in keeping this thing running like it's supposed to.
Right.
And it would be nice to have it paid for, not from our general taxes, but from occupancy tax. Because that's what it's related to.
Yes. And occupancy taxes, we do have very specific language of what, how it can and cannot be used for.
Right.
You know, we do have, where we have, see, an increase in, like paying for lifeguards and things like that.
Right.
Or things that we can, can be addressed with occupancy tax. But it would be, it would be very walking, it would have to figure, we made, that's something we may be able to use.
Yeah, I know the state's not real flexible, but you know, this, I mean, this is something, you know, this is something that every county that has tourism would care about, that, you know, if they're starting to get more and more campsites, which seems to be what's happening, then, you know, it would be nice if we could, we could get some of that money to, to use some of those tax dollars for where we're getting it from, you know.
I mean, it would, it would be worth a conversation with the finance officer.
Yeah, we're not at that level here.
But we can pass along your concern, you know.
As far as the limit to the 500 campsites, I know in the work session, Mr. Hurley brought it up, what limits, what came up with the 50-acre deal, but to mitigate that and give more options for more business, more property owners, would it be possible just to scale back the size of the campsites? Because even if you've got a 50-acre site that's got 500 campsites, I mean, 500 campsites, that's a lot of traffic. That's a lot of in and outs. So, I mean, would it be something where you would, where the county would potentially be interested in maybe downsizing the amount of campsites? And then you could shrink the acreage as well, no matter if you had a 50-acre campsite, but tell them, well, you can only have 250 sites. And then they would have to do something more recreational on the site as well to open the door for other property owners.
If that is, that is definitely worth, if there's, how many of you are, if there's at least three of you that want to make that recommendation in this draft, that, you know, to go forward to the elected official, that is something you could easily do. If you want to change, if you want to recommend different language than what's in here, that would be something you all should discuss and make the motion-
With that.
With that, yeah. I mean, that would be something, if you wanted me to, you know, pass that along through your motion, that would be the best way to do. I mean, that's why you all are here, you're the planning board, you think these things, you know, you're looking at them a little bit differently than the Board of Commissioners. You're, you know, different people with, you know, different ideas, which, and you all make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. This is language that they worked through and they became comfortable with, but maybe an idea from you all could jumpstart a conversation to address some of the things that you all are finding they're limiting with this.
I think I'd rather hear from anybody that's here too, tonight, before really kind of sorting through this, what's been brought up.
Well, let me go over this, and we can talk about Larry, what Larry included, our Economic Development Director. But our 2006 land use plan, it doesn't specifically talk about campgrounds, but does provide some language, both the land use and development goal number 10, to properly distribute development forms in accordance with the suitability of land, infrastructure available, and the compatibility of surrounding land uses. And policy economic development number one, new and expanding industries and businesses should be especially encouraged that, one, diversify the local economy, two, train and utilize a more highly skilled labor force, and three, are compatible with the environmental quality and natural amenity-based economy of Currituck County. So, Economic Development Director Larry Lombardi, and I forwarded his information on to you all in the staff report. He did submit some comments regarding that five-mile radius. And you can see what he all submitted, and I think, did you pass these out to everybody in the work session?
Yes.
So, you all have before you a spreadsheet, what is this thing? A spreadsheet with 50-plus acre lots that are in Lower Currituck, because you know, we all feel that, you know, Lower Currituck may be more impacted by this than anybody north of the canal bridge, any townships north of the canal bridge. So, but we do, you know, based upon the input from the Board of Commissioners, we do recommend approval of this request, and it is, those land use policies we just, I just went over. And it is reasonable and in the public interest, because it allows for a greater variety of tourist-oriented businesses and visitor accommodations to locate in the county. So, I'm here if you all want to hear from Larry, if you all want to ask me more questions.
I think we hear from whoever's here.
Larry, and whoever else wants to speak, so.
Laurie, can you bring up that 2006 land use?
Mm-hmm.
Is it in the, or is it in the packet here?
Well, it's in their packet, in the staff report. Let me find it.
Let me know when you find this page.
It is on page 12 of your packet.
Oh, it's almost there.
It's in there, so. Mm-hmm, it's in there, so...
Yeah, that la- it's at the bottom of page twelve. Any other question, Mr. Lombardi, you want to address?
Well, I just kinda clarified a couple things. Since I... I put some comments in there. Uh, Larry Lombardi, economic development director. Um, a couple things, um, and as I wrote in here, there's actually on page, I'll refer to it, I think it was page fifteen, going to be the sections D, E, and F, and then I'll also jump back to the land u- uh, to this slide up here as well. Um, but a couple of things, I think, again, to take as in consideration, whether you just take the tax amendment as it is, or if you're gonna, um, put some recommendations. The first, let's start with E, um, the five mile buffer between campgrounds. Um, again, it kinda goes against policy on the land use plan there, should be encouraged, diversify the local economy. Um, basically what you're gonna end up doing is knocking out competition, there's gonna be probably one in each of these areas. So, um, from my perspective as the economic development director, it's, it's not encouraging to diversify the local economy. Uh, because if you look at any type of businesses, whether it's drugstores, food stores, gas stations, they're all by, around each other, across the street from each other, things like that, um, competition is good. And for us, competition would be very good for the county residents that wanna use this facility, or even the visitors that are coming, because when you have competing c- uh, campgrounds, obviously they're gonna try to get who they can get, and keep the price down, and offer more, um, amenities. But if you put in a five, a five mile buffer, not only on the southern end, let's think the entire county, or actually, let's look up at, um, Coin Jock, for example. You know, don't laugh when I say about the bridge, but as you know, uh, that's gonna be, uh, a possibility. And on the mainland side, wouldn't it be great to have a few campgrounds that where you could get across the bridge in fifteen minutes, and you're there at the ocean, all right? But if you limit it to one, number one, you're eliminating the competition, okay? Number two, you're not expanding the economy for people to come in. And we want people to come in, spend their money, and then go home. I mean, it doesn't hurt the infrastructure, particularly schools. So I think, um, a five mile should be a recommendation to remove that limitation. That's, again, my recommendation to you all. What you do on that, that's, that's your decision, okay? Now, let's, let's look at the, uh, D, fifty acres. I don't know where the fifty acres came from. Uh, you look at franchise campgrounds, like a KOA or something like, minimum's ten acres. Fifty acres is huge. And I think the, I think, uh, it might have been Mike that mentioned with all the traffic, with fifty acres, that's a lot of vehicles. And if you look at fifty acres, you really can't get the five hundred that you can do, okay, five hundred sites. Because if you take five acres out for storage, you're now down to forty-five acres. And if the density, which is fine, twelve per, per acre, you know, where, you're still above five hundred and something, I forget the actual number, five twenty-four or something like that. So, uh, you're not, you're not getting there. Um, so I think what would make more sense would be minimum twenty or twenty-five, something along that line. Because that's about two hundred and forty sites, which is much more manageable, it's smaller. I think from a, uh, return on investment, people can make money. And again, you're talking about less traffic too, particularly with the, uh, excuse me, restrictions that we have, that we've put in there. So that would be another recommendation. And, um, just, just the, uh, last point, I, uh, let's see, I think, is it, uh, Mr. Bass, I think, brought that up. Uh, so, uh, the twenty percent, I'm not gonna talk about that, but those, those are the two things that I think. And also in your packet there, I showed you the number of properties throughout the county, basically from the, uh, Coin Jock, Marina.
Now, these properties aren't for sale necessarily.
But again, if we talk about diversifying the economy, what stops these individuals from putting their property up for sale, to have this type of amenity to the county? So, um, again, not everybody would put the property up for sale, but at the same time, I think we, we shouldn't be in the business of picking and lose, you know, picking winners and losers, uh, by eliminating or narrowing down what should be there. That's, that's where I was coming from when I spoke, and, and to those, excuse me, to those things. So, if you have any questions, let me know. And let me say, I know at the end of the day, whatever you recommend to the board, the board, they have the, they have the final say. So, I do wanna recognize that, okay? The board of, uh, commissioners, that is, all right?
I personally like three E about the five miles, I, I, uh, being separated. I just know the issues that the county's had with the other three campgrounds, and I know these are different rules and stuff, I just know the way the rules seem to change over time. I, I can just see campgrounds being next to each other, taking up a lot of land, and in my opinion, not the best use for the land. Um, certainly not the best appearance for people coming down. Um, now, maybe in five or ten years, revisit this, and maybe, maybe I'm totally off base on, on what, how I'm picturing it.
Well, uh, no, and I respect what you're saying. These are gonna be off the road, off the main road. They're not gonna be up on the road. And just because, the, the buffers that we have, where they have to be, they're not gonna, you're not gonna see them from the road. I mean, for example, you could look over in, um, Virginia Beach with their water park over there, there's campgrounds on both sides of the roads there, but you don't see them, 'cause they're, they're set back. And this would be basically the same thing here.
But it's my concern that these, these campgrounds won't be we- well-maintained, they won't follow the regulations, just like the current campgrounds have all these issues. And I feel like if we're, if we're gonna have all these campgrounds coming in possibly, I just, I, I just don't think it's, I don't think it's good use of the land.
Well, you know, that would be in the eyes of the, the people that own the property. I don't, I don't, again, I don't think it's, uh, our business to dictate what we think. We have our own rules, regulations, uh, the use for the land and so forth. Um, but that's, that's their decision, there's people that will come and make it, make that investment. But, um, back to your point about just, you know, one campground, uh, let's think about, you think it won't be well-run and so forth, uh, I mean, if there's all these different places, well, actually with competition, they would be better run. With one campground, there's no competition. I'll give you a good example, and you all can relate to it here. How about internet service in this county? We have one provider from the telephone company, and one provider for the cable. They're great, they're tremendous customer service, aren't they? They respond right away. They have their service everywhere in this county. No, they don't, because we have, they have no competition.
But we have three campgrounds now, and how many more can we build between, that are, that could go for the five miles? I mean, three, four, five more? I mean, there are, there's certainly gonna be competition.
Well, here's the thing, this is where you gotta let the market decide. And you can't roll in the existing campgrounds, 'cause there's, that's a whole nother situation that had, you know, goes years back, that things weren't done, okay? We're talking about the average camper hauling this equipment. They're typically baby boomers, uh, their income is the type of income people come to the Outer Banks. So, we're not necessarily talking about somebody that's got, you know, um, no disrespect, but when you're hauling a two hundred thousand dollar, uh, vehicle, you're not going to some dumpy campground RV. And, uh, some other people, if you've ever been across the country in these campgrounds, these are very nice campgrounds, very nice campgrounds. So, I get it, there's a jade, a jadedness based on the previous campgrounds, but this is today's campground, this is not what that was. And, and with these other things in place that Laurie had mentioned, those are the things that'll keep it where it is. And, so, uh, I understand your concern, but it's from something that was in the past, but, uh, what you're gonna see today is totally different. And we have, uh, the county has control over that, is, you know. So, from an operational standpoint, they've gotta meet the requirements.
Hey Larry, I see, um, uh, you know, I, I see your, your point absolutely, and, um, it, to me, uh, I, I believe that competition is, is, as much as we, if we have the only business, we're pretty happy about that, but, uh, uh, in, in the real world, competition does, it does give better rates. It, it, everybody's competing for the, the better place to stay. And I agree with you, it was interesting, uh, as the county showed the picture of the tent, it looked like glamping, that is a legitimate word now, glamping, glamorous camping. And that's kinda where we've moved to. And, and these are two hundred thousand dollar rigs that are coming down here, and, and, uh, at some of these campgrounds. I personally, uh, was an avid camper for years, and, and, and saw a couple things, I don't know if, if, and, and I don't wanna certainly bias any of my comments, but what we were told to leave out of this was the existing campgrounds and their non-conforming status. I presume that there's something that the county is already doing to get them to conform. Uh, but this is, it looks like the, the county has worked pretty hard to come up with a set of guidelines here, and, uh, I tend to agree with you, while, while the set of guidelines that they're putting in place for new campgrounds seems to be pretty tight and well on its way to, uh, uh, good restrictions, uh, the idea of, uh, a five mile stretch between them does not create the competition, and, and with my boys owning a surf shop, I would love for them to say, yeah, you can't have another surf shop for another five miles.
Right.
Uh, and we'd get the corner of the market for all of Corolla. Uh, that just to me seems unconstitutional, you know? I'll go, I'll go so far as to say unconstitutional. It's, uh, in this country, it's, it's a free country and free enterprise, and we should be able to, uh, put a competitive, uh, business in. And everything I know about the government from having done quite a bit of work for them, is that tourists, hardly any sole source out there, it's all competitive quotes. So, um, I think to restrict and say you can't be within five miles of, uh, another campground is, is a very unfair thing to say. Um, and I think that goes hand in hand, and Mike brought it up, with the, with the size of these campgrounds. Uh, the other thing I noticed in staying in a very large campground, at different times, they had, um, a little bit lesser control of the situation. Um, the facilities weren't quite as nice, a lot more people there, a lot less people taking care of it, uh, the margins of profit were up with less people taking care of it. I saw the same amount of people, it seemed like, working at a smaller campground where we had much better facilities, and, and much, it was under much better control. So, uh, again, to me, that's a confusing one that the, the county has in there, and I, I don't get either one of those. Uh, I think you make an excellent point about, uh, that, that taxes, if that's, and I guess there's still some question as to the, the taxes, whether, you know, the county taxes on the, the cabins, and, and why we would restrict that to twenty percent, because there's a win-win to allow that to be bigger. The win is, we do reduce the traffic. Uh, the other win is, is that we're bringing taxes in to help support, uh, that cost, so that these campgrounds are, are self, you know, self sus- sust- sustainment. Um, and, uh, we don't dig into our pockets to, uh, to, to support that, uh, with, with a raise in our taxes. So, um, I mean, I, everything I've looked at here, and again, not to have a bias with the non-conforming, that's a whole separate issue.
Right.
But I can see where the county's trying to go forward and clean this up and fix it, and, and those are, those are three that I've heard tonight, that, for me, just, I, I think it's kinda neat to try and get things to conform and tighten things up, but I don't think those are a fair way of tightening it up.
Yeah. Well, I, I'll say that the planning department has put a lot of work and effort into putting, putting this together, 'cause, uh, as Laurie mentioned, there was a number of work sessions on this, and to come up with something that was acceptable to, to move forward, so they, they get a lot of credit. But you did make a good point, and I think for Mr. Del, did I correct?
Yeah.
Um, I think from an operational standpoint, a, a smaller, more compact is a lot easier to manage than a, a much, you know, like a fifty acre, 'cause it, it could get out of hand. That's a lot of people, so, um, but again, we're gonna limit the number of campsites anyway, or, uh, per density.
Right.
Which is kinda industry average anyway. Some have ten, but twelve is still very reasonable. But then, again, that's where I think maybe that fifty acre ought to be pushed down.
Right.
And, uh...
How many are at the KOA in Water Lily? Just to get an idea of, I've been through the...
Two hundred and thirty-four.
Two, how much?
Two hundred and thirty-four.
So, it'd be double, basically, double that size.
Yeah, that, that's, that's a outlier, most of these places are not that large.
Okay.
But a, but a two hundred and thirty-four site, I don't know if anybody's ever done a matter, it's like a little...
I have.
It's like a little miniature city back there.
It is.
Yeah.
Did you guys for camp sites?
I want the number of camp sites.
Okay, number of camp sites, two hundred and thirty-four, is what they've...
So, we're talking about possibly doubling that.
Doubling that, and they've got four hundred-plus acres.
Yeah, but, uh, if you drive back there though...
It's big.
I know they've got, the way they're designed and all, but the, the two hundred and thirty-four campsites, it's, uh, responding to emergencies and things like that, it's, uh, to task on first responders, but it, it's a miniature city back there. I think you go to five hundred, you're way too big.
Yeah.
I think, I think that's something that needs to be.
It is.
Um, from that standpoint, when you respond to an emergency or whatever, just a pure inundation of two hundred and thirty-four campsites with, some campsites have one vehicle per site, some have two vehicles per site. So, you're looking at five hundred cars roughly, just about back there parked in the way, people buzzing in and out, it's, it's something to be considered.
It does, it does bring up a good infrastructure point about the, the, the traffic. Um, and I, I thought David made a good point about, um, what would this look like from the road if we had just campsite after campsite, but I see the hundred-foot buffer, is the county, does the county have something in place that, um, creates, uh, uh, the image out of a much, much better or hidden or good-looking image on the, the hundred-foot buffer off the road?
Yes, we do have design standards, uh, especially along the, uh, the highway, the corridor. We do have like an, an extra set of design standards when it comes to that and landscaping, so we do...
So, you're not seeing the, uh, the, the hundred, ninety-nine bottles of beer on the wall, uh, right off the highway there?
Yeah, and then, of course, this is for like new development, this is not for existing development.
Right.
Um, but yeah, we do, we do have design standards in place, and, um, and for, you know, landscaping, what the building can look like, what the building can be made of, and things that you can see, uh, from, from the wall, I mean, from, yes.
Can you give an example of one, uh, of somewhere on, I guess, Carrot Oak Highway, of the, the buffer?
Of a buffer like that? Um, there's not, we don't, uh, not one right off the, uh, the top of my head. Um, this would be an extra buffer. He was asking for design standards, um, and our landscaping standards, I'll look at, um, the, the Dollar General, basically right across one fifty-eight from here. I mean, there is, uh, you know, we have, that building looks better than the Dollar General in Grandy.
Right.
Um, because with our design standards, there's landscaping out front. Um, as far as a buffer, uh, I, the one, the bigger one, the, the, Tammy, the only thing that I can think of off the top of my head is for solar farms. We have that additional, uh, setback of, uh, three hundred feet.
Which, which so- solar farm?
Um...
Grandy.
One in Grandy.
You know where the Gulf War used to be?
Yeah.
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 Of something similar.
It's not the one like in Charboro?
No.
No, no, that one, that one was done early on before we, we had these additional standards.
And, and with those newer standards that you would put in place, would they be allowed to have recreational facilities as far as, um, no, I'm not trying to bring up existing, but I know a big existing issue has been a pool, separate from that, we're gonna move on to new, in this, would that be something that a newer campground would be allowed to have?
Yes, they would, it would all just have... Yes, it would, it would all just have to be, you know, it's, whatever they want to bring in for the recreational amenities. You know, if they want, they want a pool, if they're on the sound and want sound accesses and kayaks, if they want playgrounds, all those things would just need to be shown on their development, their conceptual development plan. So, they would, you know, they'd be allowed to whatever accessory uses the typical campground would want.
It's a major site plan, and you guys see them all the time.
And that's all part of the conditional use permitting process.
It would be all part of the.
That's gonna come in with each specific site they'll, they can put.
But the controls are still there.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah, they would, this text amendment, then, you know, after, after this text amendment's in place, the campgrounds are gonna have to come before you all. It would be, it's a legislative, it would be a rezoning through the conditional zoning process. And the one reason that we, staff really was an advocate of this process is this, it's a legislative process. There can be back and forth between you all and the applicant, the Board of Commissioners and the applicant. Whereas if we went another route using just a use permit, which is going through like an evidentiary hearing and board acting as a quasi-judicial manner, you cannot have that back and forth. And this is a legislative matter, you know, and if you see a site plan and you all think that, you know, a neighborhood that is gonna back up to, and you think it needs to have an extra layer of trees, that's something that we can work through the process, the zoning, the conditional zoning process, we can, things like that can be addressed. So, which is why staff was really behind going this route rather than a use permit, the conditional zoning process.
Makes sense.
If I can add an additional comment, I know you've been thrown a lot of information tonight. And you have a great responsibility. One of the things that, that we need to be realized is that, you know, we are a service tourism-driven economy. And God forbid that something happened in Corolla, Outer Banks. Tom and I live out there. But, you know, fortunately, the COVID worked to a good situation for us. But if, imagine if there was something that shut that down for a while, and we have nothing to diversify tourists on the mainland. You know, we're gonna be SOL. But again, and I'm thinking from an economic development perspective. So, we have campgrounds. People can still visit Carritoke County, spend their money at the restaurants or wherever it is on the mainland side, and still go to the ocean if they need to. They could go to the water park. So, it's important that we diversify and definitely get more industry on the mainland. And we have a very good opportunity to do that. And the other thing is, you never know what other things might be down the road in terms of other accommodations that would meet down in that area, that people may see an opportunity to bring in maybe some bigger restaurants or something. Because there's a mass of people, even if it's not rooftops, but campgrounds and so forth, you know, could be, what's the one that, what's that Cracker Barrel? They have a lot of, a lot of people, you know, they park their RVs there and all those. I mean, you don't know, is what I'm saying. But this opens the door to provide more opportunity to diversify on the mainland. So, I mean, that's.
One more question. Presumptively, we've only discussed south of the Quinjo Bridge. But this would also be good for Charboro or anywhere else in the county, correct?
Yeah, it's.
It would, anybody that's got furniture on a major arterial, just with what we're hearing, you know, and the location of Laura Currituck to the Outer Banks, I feel that it would, we just, in what we know about how things work, that it would be more geared toward Laura Currituck. That's where we've heard the most interest of people wanting to bring in campgrounds is Laura Currituck. It could be in Moayok, it could be.
North River Campground, right there in Camden, it's actually a very popular campground.
Yep, and that's the other thing, too.
It's rural. They go there for that, right there in Camden. So, that's why I wanted to make sure Charboro or.
34.
Correct, you know.
That's, right, isn't that one of the, yeah, so, it doesn't preclude anybody. So, yeah, and I'm glad that you looked at it, that we're not just saying this particular downside. It's across the county. So, what happens here is going to impact around the county. And it might make more sense over on 34, maybe, I don't know, for, maybe for hunting or fishing or boating, have some campgrounds there. Why not? If the market demands it, from my perspective, go for it.
I know you mentioned that there were 38 parcels that you had identified.
Yes.
South of the canal.
Correct.
That were 50 acres or more. But then you, we also talked about.
Yeah.
A lesser size, I think somebody had mentioned 20, 25 acres or what have you. So, do you have an idea of how many parcels roughly that would affect in that, in that area?
No.
What increase of.
Yeah.
The number of potential sites that would be eligible for that?
I don't know that, because I was looking at the 50. But I think, and that's an excellent question. I think the thing Lori mentioned in the requirements, that the one owner has to be, that one parcel has to be one owner, correct?
Yeah, it has to be under one ownership, like you can't have, if it's an LLC, or you can't have multiple parcels.
Right.
So, but, or you can't, yeah, it's under one ownership because of conditional use is, everybody needs to be, yeah, one ownership.
Yeah. So, for example, you know, even where there are more than 50 acres, maybe whoever owns the property may wanna carve out, let's say, we talk 20 or 25, let's just use those numbers, and whoever buys that. So, for that portion of land, obviously, they can do whatever they want. Whoever buys it, you know, based on our requirements and so forth. But, you know, you think about the use of the land, people might argue that solar farms aren't, aren't the best use of land either. But, you know, from a farmer's perspective, if it's land that he could get better money on a multi-year lease over 20, 30 years versus what the market might be for growing soybeans, we only grow three things in the county. So, it really comes down to an economic decision for the owner, if it makes sense to carve out a portion or sell it all, or whatever the case may be.
And even along those lines, talking about a 50-acre parcel, is it possible under this for, let's just say, two people had 25-acre adjoining parcels that met the criteria of being on the major arterial road and so forth, would they be able to combine their properties to meet that?
Yes, if they're able to combine them and then create.
Or a single ownership entity.
Or a single ownership, you know, yeah, then that would, that would work.
Yeah.
I didn't know if it, it's not affecting like parcels that are as they exist as of today?
Yeah, it's not, you know, if they're able to combine, if anybody's able to, you know, to combine parcels to hit that 50 and to meet those other criteria be, being on a major arterial, yes, that would definitely be allowed. Not as the parcel lines sit whatever day that this gets enacted.
Sure.
I know Jeff Foster had signed up, but I don't know if he wants to speak.
Well, we'll see. Any other questions for staff? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And do we have a member of the public who would like to speak? And if you would come, state your name and address for us and address us. Thank you.
I'm Jeff Foster, and I live at 166 Baxter Estates Road. I've been involved one way or another, I guess, for the past year and a half with trying to figure out a direction for campgrounds here. And I'm an avid camper. I've got seven kids, I've got 15 grandkids. And for the past seven years, we've actually gone across country for the entire month. And we've seen new campgrounds developing, some that are being developed now, some that are already in place and already running. And it gave me an idea as an investor or an owner to wanna build a campground in Carritoke County. I've been here since the late 80s. I own businesses in Norfolk. And I've been trying to navigate this, and I've learned a lot just sitting here tonight, that I guess it's the Board of Commissioners that had to be convinced on some of this, where I thought it was the other way around. And then figuring out some stuff today with Larry, I kinda got caught off guard and decided to come tonight, because I kinda put this to bed three or four months ago when I thought that the Commissioners had decided it had to be 50 acres. But a year and a half, two years ago, when we first started down this road, I had written several emails and several suggestions when they were looking at redoing the campground ordinance. And my daughter was here with me, and we had quite a good, quite many good conversations on a certain agenda for new campgrounds, not the old ones. And somehow or another, two or three months ago, it went from 20, 20 acres to 50 acres. And in my understanding, it was a done deal, that that's where we were. So, it kinda took me out of it as an investor, as a homeowner in Carritoke, because I felt like 50 acres, there's just a limited amount of 50 acres for sale. There's not that many options. And on top of that, I wouldn't wanna build a 50-acre campsite. You're much better with smaller 10- or 20-acre campsites. And my idea as an investor and an owner was gonna be something very nice, something very luxurious, that more and more families now buy campers that they would wanna go to as a vacation spot. And then, you know, go to the water park, go to the Outer Banks, with something much smaller. And having a couple conversations with people when that happened, I understood that there was a couple concerns with the Commissioners that they didn't want campgrounds popping up all over the place. That was one of the comments. And the other one was, they didn't want a certain amount of people or a certain element of people from Dare County using the campgrounds as a residence. But when you, when you look at some of the restrictions that are in place, you've got 50 acres. I'm the only one here, I think, that is looking at building a campground. So, and I've heard some of this dialogue back and forth, and I think it's accurate that the market is gonna dictate the amount of campgrounds here. The market's only gonna support so many campgrounds. And it's not gonna be a lot, because the ideal place to go here is the beach or the water park. If you have a smaller campground, you're gonna get more for your buck, more bang for your buck than a, than a large 50-acre campground with 460 sites on it, or 260 sites, I mean. Where a 20-acre campground, you'll have 160 sites. So, what I would like to know is, how did the conversation go from 20 acres to 50? Does anybody know that? Is there an answer to that?
That would be county, I think.
Why it would go from 20 to 50?
Well, that happened in a work session. And as far as I know, that's the best our notes were, that the Commissioners talked amongst themselves and got to that, that 50-acre was, I guess, where at least four of them, it was, you know, they have not voted. Like you said, this is still in draft form, it's before the planning board for them to make a recommendation on. And, but by consensus, at least four of them gave direction for that 20 acres to be changed to 50. That's, all of our notes have that as 50 acres was the minimum.
Is there, is there a certain agenda or a end result or a product that the county would like to see? I mean, is it, you know, in a, in a business setting, you come up with an agenda, and you decide what you want the final product to look like? There's a big difference between 20 acres and 50 acres, and then making that requirement. Because as an investor, you've already got all these requirements. It can only be on a certain artery, it has to be five miles away from another one, and it has to be 50 acres. So, if, if that's consistent, and that's where the county ends up, you're not gonna have a lot of competition anyway. I don't know if the county wants competition or if the county wants a campground.
Well, and this is where, I mean, these are good questions, and these are things that need to be, you know, if this moves forward to the Board of Commissioners, that you would need to ask them. This is, you know, their vision of what they would want a campground. And they worked through this, I know you and I spoke, and you were at, you know, probably most of the work sessions, and you saw their thought process of how they worked through that. So, this would be, that would be a good question for, you know, to bring up to the Board of Commissioners.
Has that horse already left the barn? Is that still an option?
I, I mean, until the, until the Board of Commissioners votes on this, this is, you know, this is, has not been, has not been enacted. These rules have not. Right now, it is before the planning board to make, to make a recommendation. It would then go before, back to the Board of Commissioners. If they want to make a recommendation different than what the language is presented, they can do that. And then the Board of Commissioners can then decide to go with a different recommendation, that's the course of this board, to maybe, you know, if you show up and speak during the public hearing and sway their opinion, or at least four of them, or the majority of them, however many are there that day, then, you know, it's not, it's not a done deal. This was the direction we were given, language we drafted, staff, the staff was given and the staff drafted. So, this is, until they vote on it, there's still room for change.
Yeah, I think, I think a way maybe, maybe to state it would be that the Board of Commissioners gave a directive to the staff to come up with some language concerning the campground. And then the staff, once they put that together, brings it to the planning board, where we sit as an advisory board. And we hear input from you, input from the staff, get information. And then, when we move, we just make a recommendation or give advice to the Commissioners. Then once it goes before them, that's where the rubber hits the road, so to speak. And that's, that's where the decisions are finalized. So, this is just one step in the, in the process. And we don't have binding authority. We discuss and advise.
Yeah, it is sort of confusing. Is it, is it the planning board or the Commissioners that decide what they want that end product to look like?
The Commissioners have the final say in what the end product will look like. We have input.
50 acres doesn't necessarily take me or anybody else out. It just limits the possibilities of what, what you can build. Because there's, there's not, you know, one of the Commissioners has said they want it behind the water park. Well, that's 200-some acres for sale. That's the only 50-acre parcel I know of that's for sale. So, to put something that big there, along with the other restrictions, it just limits the possibilities that you have, you know, as an investor to build something like that. But something else I was confused on, in one of the work sessions, there was a time limit on the amount of time that a camper could stay at a campground. Which was, was, is that 30 days?
No, after the deliberations that the Board of Commissioners went through, because there are people that do camp for an entire season, that, that time was, was pulled back. So, that either, you're either seasonal, or you're a short-term visitor. So, yeah, that, that 30-day period was pulled back because there are several, there are in our existing campground, not, but I know there's people come down, you know, in April and stay till October, or leave their camper there and come down every weekend if they're in the Hampton Roads area.
Permissible now.
So, that's permissible.
One of the, one of the reasons they wanted the limitation of how long a guest could stay was because they didn't want it to turn into a long-term residency.
Correct, and they are trying to, go ahead.
I'm sorry, so when you talk about the 30-day, and that's, you're talking about the park closing for 30 days?
The park completely closing, all RVs being removed, and all guests, there's no guests anymore during that 30-day period. It's just potentially a full-time employee caretaker type at the campground. There's no people coming in and out, no visitors coming in and out, no guests.
And that is exactly how one-on-one's in Virginia Beach operates. I do know everyone has to.
Are these all at the same time? Or they can pick when they shut?
They can pick, they can pick.
Literally, you can kinda pick up and kinda, well, I'll go over here for 30 days, but I like this campground better, so now I'm going back for my 11 months. Interesting. Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
In a recent, I guess a whole different. In a recent, I guess a whole different project, one of the things that was brought up, which I, I found fascinating was ROI. And have you, in, obviously you've, you've spent some time and money and effort already looking into a campground of 20 acres. I, I don't even know why we have a minimum, but there, there must be, I don't, I don't know why the, the county might suggest a minimum, but there must be a return on investment minimum out there. As, as a businessman, what is the minimum size?
10 to 20 acres.
10 or 20 acres? So, so 10, you're saying, would really kind of be pushing that line of the ROI?
Yeah.
Okay.
Anything larger than that, and, and a lot of what I'm saying now, you guys already captured in your own deliberation here with me listening. And I forgot who it was, one of you had mentioned a larger campground would not necessarily be a better product. You're gonna have, it, it's not going to look as good. You're not going to be able to maintain it. And I think in that scenario, because I'm a resident of Currituck County, I would want the best product. Bigger doesn't necessarily mean better.
Oh, I know.
In, in campgrounds. If you go across the country and you'll see large campgrounds that aren't maintained and you'll see tight, efficient, booked campgrounds. They stay booked because they're nice and they're always smaller. They're, you know, they're not 280 campers here.
Right. And it behooves you to make the best out of that 100-foot buffer out front to make it appealing for somebody to want to come in there and, which obviously makes it appealing for people who are riding by it as well. And I was just, I was just curious, had you crunched the numbers and so somebody still could be profitable on a 10-acre site?
You could be. And, and to your point, I think if the investor was, if the county, there should be a limit. I mean, whether it's 10 acres, whether it's 20 acres. And then the investor could potentially purchase something larger. And if it's a better product than what anybody imagined, then he has the option on, under that same domain to expand that footprint in that campground. So, for example, there may be a 30, 30 acre site, but he only starts out with 10. And that's what he develops. And it turns out to be nicer to the community, nicer to the campers, he has 10 more acres to expand and then 10 more acres after that. But to require it to be 50, you're limiting, you're kind of limiting your own economic potential. Because I don't know how many options there are to buy 50 acres here, but I don't think there's many. I know of one and it's $7 million, so it doesn't really get you a campground in Currituck County.
Anybody done a noise study difference between a 50 acre campground and a 10 or a 20 acre campground? I mean, I know you got the 100-foot buffer, but inside that 100-foot buffer, you've got 50 acres of noise happening versus a 100-foot buffer on a 10 acre site, it's a lot less noise coming out of that place. So I, it's just another thought that crossed my mind of, of why it might behoove us to consider that a smaller size could be attractive. And, and, you know, if, if somebody's, I, I would tend to believe that a, a bigger campground is gonna make their money off volume. Whereas a smaller campground is going to try and service the elite, you know, those who really want a nice place. And I think that diversification's probably good.
Yeah, volume is kind of that KOA up there that doesn't look good. And it's, it's not, it's not picture.
We're not supposed to talk about that.
What, what is the, you had mentioned the, you know, the best use of land. I mean, there's no campgrounds south of the bridge, other than what's on the Outer Banks. What would be a better use? I mean, another housing development?
I wasn't arguing against the campground, I mean, the campgrounds, I'm just arguing about too many of them.
Where are they, though?
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying if, if this passed, are they lower the acreage or whatever, there could be a lot of campgrounds and I'm not sure that is preferable to me. Some, some absolutely. If they're well-maintained and nice, yeah, absolutely.
There, there's, there's people with a lot of money and they all camp now. They've got kids, it's not just grandparents with grandkids anymore, it's parents with kids. And someone had pointed $200,000 rigs, it's, it's at least that or more. There's a lot of money that these people spend on campers.
How about if you had a, a much cheaper one? And as Mr. Hurley had mentioned, you stayed there for 11 months at the campground, you vacate then for a month, you have kids actually living with you, they're going to the schools.
That's what I'm surprised with, that there's not a time limit on someone...
I don't see how that would prevent people from having schoolchildren and living in an RV and they're attending, attending the schools here.
It's a legitimate point.
Well, the way you have it written now, that's...
It could be.
You could have that happen, which is surprising to me because one of the main complaints I heard was that they didn't want it in the lower part of the county, which is why they raised it to 50 acres, because they didn't want people using it as a residency. But at that time, we were talking about people weren't able to stay as a guest at a campground longer than 30 days.
Right.
That's what I think it should be.
Sounds like we're putting the definition in the wrong place.
Yeah.
The definition should be who's a camper and who's a resident, you know? And maybe that's where the defining this, this piece of it has to have.
As an investor, I mean, you, I, I would like to work with the county and say, it probably wouldn't be best for an investor to limit the amount of time somebody could stay, but to work with the Commissioner and say, by all means, don't let a resident stay at a campground for longer than 30 days if there's a concern that someone's going to turn it into a residency.
So...
Because what she has mentioned, I mean, as an investor, it'd be good to say, yeah, you could stay this campground for six months. You pay upfront, we've got your money and use the amenities, go to the water park, go to the Outer Banks, go to Busch Gardens. That, that would be wonderful as an investor. But I agree that if there's already a labor concern with people in housing that you don't want them now, this could turn out to be that situation and I may not be able to turn that off. You know, as a, as a, as a fair, non-discriminatory investor, I couldn't tell one person, you could stay for six months, but you could only stay for 30 days. If I was the county, I would look at restricting how long a person can stay at a campground, other than the person that owns a campground. Whether it's 30 days or 45 days or 60 days, something like that.
As an investor too, and you're only one man as well, one potential business, as, as that goes, how do you view, I, I know we're talking about the, the long-term rental, but say that that was addressed, because we could recommend that as well, we could recommend that someone can't camp somewhere longer than 30 days, two months or three months. Or without, with that handled, if that was addressed in a different way, how would you view the county saying, you have to shut down for 30 days? Do you think it should be longer than 30 days? Would you be fine with that? A two-month window or what, what would, what would you?
I don't really, I don't see any campground here being open, you know, from January through March 1st. If, if they are, it's because they have long-term residency and they shouldn't be open anyway. So I, whether it's a one-month, two-month or three-month timeframe that they close it down, absolutely, it's not profitable December, you know, through February, no one's going to camp.
Right. You almost should pick the same time so that you don't campground hop from January 1st to March 1st.
You could almost just close it down as, as the county just dictates that requirement.
It's interesting, there's a lot of ways to fix what the, what you're talking about, but...
And the proposed language does say that full-time residents are, are not permitted. But I guess the question is, how do you define them and how do you enforce?
If you want to ground to another, they're not full-time.
But how do you, how do you regulate it too?
Right, exactly. That's, that's, that's the question.
What's the definition of full-time?
You've got to get that definition in there. There's got to be a definition of a camper.
Yeah, you could almost look the other way on the five-mile requirement if, if the size is reduced, because you're not going to have, but so many campgrounds here anyway. You know, you're certainly not going to have that many options for 50 acres or more. But anyways, thank you.
Thank you.
It's been confusing, Larry, thanks for bringing me up here. Now I realize that, you know, I quit this process three months ago because it was just, I got really disappointed that it would just arbitrarily go from 20 to 50 after spending so much time on it. Now I realize that there's still an option to go back to the Commissioners?
Yep, the next week. Whether they take it up tonight or not, whatever, if they have recommendations, then the next step goes to the Board of Commissioners. And that's where the final authority lies and whatever they decide. But you'll have an opportunity in the public hearing there to express just what you expressed tonight. Does that...
So this recommendation isn't final then? They still have to deliberate it? The Commissioners do?
That's correct.
Well, they deliberate it?
They take all this information, they go back over there.
Or they could just ignore it and...
We, we do not bind the Commissioners in any form or fashion. Like I said, we're, we're, we're an advisory board and they will hopefully listen to us and I know they do.
This has been the best discussion yet.
But, and, and, and move forward, but it's, it's kind of a clarifying process here tonight for the, for the board and, and for the staff. And then it moves forward to the Commissioners for their deliberation and decision.
All right, well, campers spend a lot of money.
Yeah, don't forget you have staff here tonight too.
Where people are camping, excuse me?
You have staff here tonight too. So it's not just the planning board, but you have the staff, which also has a, a strong influence with, with it as well. It's not just what comes back from the planning board. The staff is in constant communication with the Commissioners as well. So a lot, there's a lot of stuff that's going to travel.
Thank you all for letting me talk.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? If not, any other questions for the staff?
If, if we're gonna, say someone was gonna recommend approval, you just add in the recommendations to the language, is that...
That's, that's correct.
If you want to, let's say, change the size, you know, you recommend approval, but with these changes and list out those changes that you want to make, if, if you, if that's the route you want to go, yeah.
I, I think that, you know, there's a, there's enough that's going to be in the minutes, which obviously the Commissioners are going to have that too. I, I'd like to make a motion that we, we drop the five miles and that I, I don't believe that's necessary at all. So to drop the five miles and I don't know what else you need me to say on that.
Well, the acreage, see, he brought up a point about, and then Mr. Corbell brought up a point about 500, you know, a 500 campsite.
Yeah, I, I would recommend that be way decreased. I mean, like...
Oh, yeah. Well, you can make that motion as well. I mean, I'm, I'm just bringing up the five-mile one we talked about.
I now agree with you on the five-mile thing as well.
Well, then...
We can lower the acreage and lower the maximum number of campsites.
And I agree with Mr. Dahl, I, I don't want to see a campground every other parcel either. However, you are somewhat limited already from the other regulations of main corridor. So that limits it already, that's one limitation. And, and then how many people are going to, if you shrink the size, that would take some of the appeal away to bigger, to bigger people sometimes as well.
I, I only made the motion on the fifth, the five-mile part because I find that probably the most competitively unfair and probably is, is just most restricting as far as competitive business. And I, I just don't think we have a right to do that. Although I think the, the 50 acres does not make any sense to me, I just think the 50 acres really doesn't step on the competitive nature and the, the free business that we, we do in this country to be able to start your own business. And to, to go and say, you can't be five miles from the next guy who does this is, I just think terribly wrong. I mean, if I wanted to put up, you know, a, I don't know, another restaurant right next to my friend's restaurant, I should be able to do it, you know? So I, that's, to me, it's just a harsh restriction. And I, I'm just making a motion that they, they drop the five-mile distance. I don't know what, if any, distance has to be in there. Because what was stated is that if you have the, I mean, if you have these, a 10 acre site, you know, it's still at the end of the day, if somebody else comes up and puts another 10 acre site, you're going to just have two very good competitive 10 acre sites, you know? And you have more places to stay. And I don't, there was a really good point made and I, I don't know whether Larry made it or Jeff made it, but you're not going to get saturated. It's like any business. You, you are going to find out what it will yield. I mean, and that's what's going to happen. And somebody's going to come in eventually and they're going to want to do a campground, but they haven't done their homework and it's already exhausted because the other campgrounds have really kind of reached their peak. It's, it's, you know, at some point, you do the economics on it, you're going to say, I'm not putting a campground here, there's already 15 campgrounds. And they've really kind of exhausted the resources of, of people using campgrounds here. So I think it is a self-settling, you know, situation that you're, you're not going to end up with as many. It's just like I said earlier, the surf shop, I, you put 10 surf shops next to each other, nobody's making any money. Somebody's going to figure that out before they do it. So I'm making a motion that we drop the, the five-mile restriction completely and that just gets removed.
All right, we have a motion to approve with the exception of dropping the five-mile radius requirement. Is that...
That's, that's correct. I mean, I'm, I'm only one motion. I don't know if anybody else is making a motion, so I, I don't want to speak for everybody else. So...
I, I'm sorry, but I still have the issue about people hopping from campground to campground when they're closed.
And we can put that in a motion too.
And again, I don't know how to say it, but I'm just...
Let's just deal with one motion at a time.
Because I can still, I can certainly see that.
So with, with the motions, are you, are you, because I'm, I'm...
I'm just looking for somebody second it, that's all.
I, I understand that.
Well, maybe, maybe, maybe we, right.
We need three.
I think at this point, if you're, if you're actually looking to make a motion to approve the text amendment, I think you need to get your criteria and you can build, you can, you can do by consensus without taking an official vote.
And then, exactly, then we'll, then we'll...
That's where I'm confused about a motion.
See about a second to that motion.
I think Mr. Hurley is saying remove the, the five-mile buffer. And if by consensus, you all can talk it through and have, I guess, at least support of three.
So we're not voting on the text amendment yet, we're just voting on...
No, well, we will be.
We will.
Once we, once we finalize the motion, get, get a, the, the motion with the set conditions and get a second on that, then we will vote on it. But, but at this point, we have a suggestion for the motion to eliminate the five-mile buffer, to approve, in essence, it's approving, moving to approve the change with the condition of removal of the five-mile buffer, but we'll just open this for discussion to...
Because David, Mr. Dahl brought up about the 30 days and I'd like to put, that can be put in the motion as well. That, you know, we can put the five-mile, we can put the 30 days, we can put the acreage and the maximum number in a motion. All of that can be covered.
And the 30 days, I do know on that...
Where is that?
On that front, it is in, on page 17, the 17...
HI.
HI.
I, designation of a 30-day period between November 1st and March 1st, when the campground is closed.
That's just when it's closed, that's not...
Yeah, that doesn't have anything to do with how long people can be there.
Are you meaning how long, Mr. Dahl, how long a camper can stay on site?
That's what I'm...
To prevent long-term...
I, I, I think the gentleman had a good point about...
People moving around and...
Right.
Yeah.
Lowering it down, lowering it from what it, what was it, 30 days and he had mentioned 45, I think?
To increase to 60, I think, was what he said, just January through to the beginning of January, March.
But yeah, that, that part of it too, yes.
Right, yeah, absolutely. I agree with that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, closing the campground, and, and should they all be closed at the same time?
That's a, that's a really, I think so.
I think, well, some of the campgrounds are still making money right now. I don't know if it's profitable.
That might be a tough one to dictate, but that does stop the camp hopping.
But I thought you, just so I'm clear, clear on it, Mr. Dahl, I felt like you were saying a 30-day limit. In other words, if, if I towed my camper to campground Z, when I get there, I can stay no longer than 30 days and I have to leave.
Yeah, there's sort of two different, two different issues there, I, I think, to me. I mean, that's part of it, but also the, the closing part, can you, if it's closed for 30 days, can you just go to another campground for 30 days? And you have three, four kids in school. You're living there.
They have the seasonal versus, what was the other one?
Short-term?
Short-term. So short-term's your 30. Your seasonal effectively, the way it's written right now, is 11 months that they can go and stay there. Yeah, can you get your kid in school for, you know, during that 11-month period and act like a resident and stay in a campground? Yes. But that's really, I don't know if that's so much a campground issue or it's a definition... Yes, but that's really, I don't know if that's so much a campground issue or it's a definition of a resident versus a camper. And, you know, if you're in a campground, you've got to say you can't be a resident. I'm sorry, you're not a resident, you're not using the schools, this is a campground, this is supposed to be a temporary thing and, 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 you know, I, I don't know, we may be trying to put that, tighten that up in the wrong place. It maybe it's just tightened up in a definition. And, and again, that's something that could be said here tonight as well. So, I mean, I, the way I'm taking notes on it right now, it's, uh, five miles to remove fifty acres. We heard, uh, a little bit of information tonight that you could still get ROI on a ten acre site, where ten acre would, would be a reasonable minimum. The twenty percent on the cabins doesn't make any sense to me, I would propose they move that at least to thirty percent cabins, so we can bring more tax in. And, um, I think, uh.
And you're looking at making this all one motion, am I right, Mr. Hurley?
Yes, that's, I, I think that's what we want.
Why would we put any limit on the, on, on the cabin one? Why would we put any limit on it?
I know, I, because that's, I mean, if they wanna do fifty, I don't know why either.
I mean, if we're gonna make, if, if the county can make money on the more.
On cabins, yeah.
Yeah, why, why wouldn't you want a campground, just cabins?
Just to ask, ask you all, would that fall under more like a motel scenario if they built a campground that was seventy percent full-time cabins? Or would that fall under a different definition of campground?
I think it would still be a campground, um, you know, how they operate it, a motel would be, um, more as, as a single, I don't wanna say a single unit, cause you do obviously have different things, but, um, I think it would still be a campground even with, you know, upwards of, of fifty percent.
The word transient's always comes in, like, uh, you know, it's, it's for a transient, whether it's a motel or a campground, it's supposed to be for a transient person, not a full-time resident, so, yeah, I think.
Right, no limitations on cabins is what we're saying right now, is remove the limitation on the percentage of cabins that can be on the.
You're, you're for getting rid of the five miles, I'm good with that, what was your other one on your motion?
I think we're putting these all together, it's gonna be one motion, that's correct.
So, what do you got, then, the five mile thing?
Five miles is, uh, is the restriction is lifted, the fifty acres, uh, restriction is lifted and changed to ten acre and the cabin, percentage of cabins, restriction is lifted. Where that, we don't dictate a percentage of cabins, we don't dictate the distance away and we don't, we move the fifty acre to ten acre.
So, would the, with the, with, so I guess the concern on the cabin thing there is that, does the county view that, just thinking outside the box and from what I've done in, in my career, does the cabin look at, um, that is regulating the long-term rental of the cabin equally to the RV slot? Cause that's where you could come in more of the long-term rental issue too, or are you limiting?
Again, that, that regulation is not, it's not gonna be done by, that, that's a different area where they've gotta, they've gotta tighten the definitions and they have to fix that, whether they extend the, the time that, that you can be there from thirty days, you know, that you have to go away to sixty days that you have to go away, there's a lot of things they can do to, to clean up the definition so that what, uh, what David talked about doesn't happen. And I think they can clean that up.
Cause I would think on page seventeen, HI, instead of thirty day period, make it sixty days.
Uh, uh, I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Does that make sense, Lori?
And that would be the campground shutting down for sixty days.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying, Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, yeah, and I'm reporting to the gentleman, he said basically, you know, nothing's happening anyway.
Right.
For several months at this time.
But that gives us ten months though, see, somebody could still hang out there for ten months.
Absolutely.
Definition of a resident and a, and a camper.
Oh, absolutely, I'm, I'm, people can still do it.
In the paperwork that defines what a camper is, and I mean, individual, not a.
Right, right, not the, not, not the, not the I in the R.
Not the thing, yeah, but the person, um, you should, we have short-term guests and, and seasonal, right, short-term guests and seasonal, that's really, uh, or, I'm sorry, the campsites, um, you know, you would go into using, um, and, um, how we establish residency for, for anyone, like, where are they registered to vote? Where do they get their mail? Where is their driver's license? Where's their car registered to?
Utility bills.
Utility bills, things like that, that establishes residency.
Kids can't go into school because you've gotta be a resident.
Yeah, I, I don't wanna say they can't, I mean, if the kids show up, they have to be educated, why, I'm sorry, Mr. Dahl.
Why couldn't they be considered a resident? You, you're parked in a campground with three kids, what is the school gonna say? No, we're not gonna educate?
Well, that's where you, you, I mean, the kids show up, they're gonna have to be educated, but, you know, establishing residency, um, and, and that would be one indication, you know, the school bus starts stopping at the campground and we would have to.
Their mail there, they're paying utilities?
All they had to do is get a P.O. board.
Yeah, I mean, but it, you know, it's, it's, it's more than just, you know, one thing and, you know, I know we all are very, very aware of impacts the schools right now on the situation that we're in, but, you know, it would be just more than that and, you know, and would, things that we've dealt with in the past, enforcement issues where you've had to establish residency, those are the driver's license, where are you registered to vote? Where do you get your mail? Where do you, you know, where do you have a utility bill? Where, what does your driver's license say? Where's your, you know, where do you pay taxes on your vehicle? Where do you pay taxes? If you're living in your camper, where does your tax bill come from your camper? You know, those would be the things that we would use to establish residency, um, and, and that would be part of, you know, unfortunately for our code enforcement staff, that would be in part of, of the record-keeping and investigations that they would have to do. If we get a call, I, I've seen, you know, the school bus stopping at the campground, then here we go. You know, we'd have to go down that road of finding if there's anybody that has tried to establish residency, um, you know, and unfortunately, a school bus is a very, you know, big sign that they tried.
But it sounds like they, they can do it.
Um, I, I don't wanna say that they can't, I think, you know, it would be, you know, they get a P.O., but obviously, there's always gonna be some workarounds and loopholes. And that would be where you would have to rely on, you know, uh, some of these regulations are geared toward hoping to get good management out of, out of the campground and that's where we would, you know, look to the, look to, uh, the business owner to, you know, these are our regulations, you know, we don't want to have long-term residents here, uh, that's our goal, uh, and hopefully, you know, working with them, we could minimize that, if I'm not gonna say eliminate.
To address that, to address that, I, right underneath of that, covers on page seventeen, says full-time residents at the campground, other than the campground owner, family, employees, or families as specified in this ordinance are not permitted at the campground, so.
But if you're, you're hopping campgrounds, now again, if you have a sixty day, sixty days instead of thirty, maybe that will limit it, but it's.
But, but you can define it as camping, you don't have to, you don't have to define it as a campground, you can define it as camping. You can no longer camp, you know, period, whether you, whether you're in one campground or another campground, you, you know, if you, if you've got X period of time you have to disappear, it's, you can't disappear to another campground, you're camping, you've used up your camping permit time.
I do have one more question for you, Lori.
Okay.
Um, in, in the planning departments, studies and learning and, and working on all of this, was there an industry standard? I, I know Mr. Fossey was a wealth of knowledge as well, but he is potentially one man, one business owner. Um, was there an industry standard that y'all saw for the shutdown period to make y'all come up with the thirty day? Versus, as we're discussing, pay possibly extending it?
Um, we didn't find a, a standard, it's gonna be dictated by the, the season, you know? Um, our tourist season, and there's plenty, plenty of places that are gonna be there during the summer, but, you know, here, we also, the commissioners working through it, they were worried about, uh, you know, hunting season, duck season and different hunting seasons that this could, um, so that's why I, I think it's November.
I could bring along, and that's through January, just to bring that up.
Yeah, so.
We don't even have to resolve this, the commissioners resolve it, we can just, we can simply make.
Give guidance, give guidance.
And there is, there is, there is a means of, of minimizing it to some extent with the, with the language on bottom of page sixteen, Roman numeral nine, that says, "Campsites shall be designated as seasonal or short-term, no more than twenty percent of the total campsites may be seasonal." So, that in effect minimizes s- to a degree.
Yeah, it is.
It does, so it's in there.
It's probably, yeah, there's a little bit there.
It's kinda covered somewhat, and if they can afford a seasonal rental, they're, they're probably not.
Yeah, maybe more expensive to stay in a campground than at one of these campgrounds than it is to rent a house, so.
Might be overthinking that one a little, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I can't imagine that you, you know, buy a house and become a resident if you can afford that.
Yeah, if you're paying.
If it was cheap enough rent, I do see your concern completely, but that old campground is gone, uh.
But, but keep in mind, the restrictions that are coming out, which are, are, are good guidelines and restrictions that are, like the buffer and all this, this is not going to allow for a cheap campsite anymore, you know, this, a, a lot of this is to clean up the mess that's there right now and, and then go back and fix all that. Um, I, I think a lot of this is going to make these campsites more expensive, but, um, but I think there's a lot of people out there that want those campsites for what they are, they're just campsites, they don't wanna be sending their kids to school here, they want a vacation in a great spot. And it'll be a point where it's not affordable for them to live there, and I don't think any new sites based on these regulations are going to be that way.
I agree.
Yeah, and I think what's going to happen as they get the, uh, get the old sites to conform, and that's gonna be cleaned up as well. So, there's some problems there, but that's not even supposed to be mixed into tonight.
Right.
We're, we're mov- moving towards the future.
So, five mile lifted radius, fifty acres lifted to ten, is your, is what you're thinking of?
Yes, five miles, the five mile radius, um, lifted, the fifty acre dropped to ten acre.
So, sixty day closure?
Thirty days moves to sixty days and no limit on the percentage of cabins.
And that's the permanent cabins that you're talking about, right?
The camping cabins or alternative camping units?
The alternative camp, right, no limit on that.
That, eight. Yeah.
How about the maximum number, five hundred campsites? Don't wanna tweak that any?
Yes, I'd, I'd, I'd like to throw that in there, like, what, what would be a reasonable, cause if, say someone did buy a hundred acres.
Yeah, there's two hundred and fifty at K.O.A. and you said that's like.
If, if you drive through there, I mean, and, and I'm not against big business and people making money either, but, and not against growth, but you drive through there, I mean, it's, it's a bustling, it's like it's a little city back there.
Uh, you, you raise a valid point, I mean, even, even when we talked about the noise, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna make them conform and have, and I don't know if you can go back and say you've gotta reduce the size of your campsite, but they do, there are probably other com- things they gotta conform to, but going forward, we certainly can minimize that, and one, one of my big concerns is control of the campsite and the amount of noise that's gonna come out of that campsite with the same-sized buffer, so.
Yeah, exactly.
And then, and that, that still doesn't rule out your man that says, okay, I'll, say we drop it back to two fifty, just say we set two fifty instead of five hundred, that still doesn't rule out the man that has a little more money as an investor and says, all right, well, I'll buy eighty acres and still put two fifty and make a bigger buffer for the surrounding, and that's something that can be addressed in the future too.
Sure, yeah. So, is there something to be said on how the, the maximums, uh, here?
I, I would recommend us coming up with something that we kind of agree on, and, I mean, uh, what are y'all thinking? Uh, five hundred, I think, would be way too many.
How about two fifty?
You know, what do you think, Mr. Owens?
I'm, I'm waiting for a consensus.
What, what was the one at K.O.A.? How many was it?
She said two thirty-four.
Yeah, and you say that's already unruly, right?
Well, no, I'm not saying it's unruly, I'm just saying, if you, if you start going bigger than that, it's, in my opinion, I think you're, you're, you're like creating your own little.
I, I agree, I agree.
Within a city.
You're gonna lose control, so two fifty, I'm, I think that's more than generous than the amount of campsites on one.
I agree.
All right.
That way, if there was a man that wanted to make a bigger one, good, good.
He certainly can appeal back and get, go back in front of the board again and try and get the text changed again, but right now, limiting to two fifty seems reasonable.
Now, where did you come up with the ten acres from? Cause the gentleman that spoke was twenty, he said twenty.
He's, he's looking at a twenty acre, he wants to do it, but I asked him, cause if he did his homework on the return of interest, uh.
Yeah, I think that's, I'm good with that one, I don't, I don't know about the rest of them.
Site, and he, so when he said, your return of investment, I'm sorry, your return of investment on, it seemed like you could still be profitable at ten acres.
Minimum you'd be profitable.
Right, right.
I, I'd like to get the acreage up to twenty, not ten.
You cut a, you cut a few mama pops out on that one then, that may not have the money for twenty.
See, a ten acre site, it like, a ten acre site, if you think about it, she just asked me if we had touched this one, but we haven't, but the, you're limiting, they're limited to twelve campsites, we haven't touched that, I, um, so, if you've got ten acres and how much of it is storage? And you're only limiting them.
Residents, you've got a hundred-foot buffer, there's not many sites on there, it's really.
So, you're, I, I agree, maybe twenty, twenty-five, somewhere in there.
Interesting, by the time you do the buffers and, and all that, you're.
I don't even know why we, we have a limitation on it, to tell you the truth, but, but, you know, I, I don't understand why it's there anyways, you know? Why would you have done a fifty? Why would you do a ten? Why would you do a twenty? Why would we do any of that? Because we had somebody stand before us and say, I can't do this development because the return on investment doesn't happen until X. And we kind of voted on that, we said, you know, it really is dictated by the economics of the situation, unless we have some strong reason to say, that would be terrible to have a small campsite and here's why.
If Corolla, somebody has one or two acres on there, uh, down there, could they not do a campground then?
No, you're, you're not, no, you're not with your hundred-foot buffer and everything you're gonna do.
Would only be, the only residential, the two residential districts, um, would be, uh, single-family mainland, which is only on the mainland and single-family isolated, um, it would.
Which is not silent.
Which is not silent, so, we're not even including, um, SFO, single-family Outer Banks, which is, you know, most of Corolla. So, we may be able to do a campground in Corolla.
I may be misunderstanding it, but I don't think that you're gonna end up with two and three acre sites. I think that we got two things that you could probably pull off, still, a, a small business, uh, person could, could do in ten acre site and might be able to pull that off, and that's probably the minimum real estate you would, you would be reasonable anyways and, uh, but we shouldn't dictate that. There, that's gonna be dictated by, again, return on investment, if, if it's not profitable to do five acres, why would you do it? So.
So, a ten percent storage area, one acre on ten acres and then a hundred-foot buffers, you might would still get.
I didn't do the square footage to acres yet.
Twenty-five campers or so in there, you would think.
It's not many.
You know, but I, I don't see where that, you know, could be.
I don't see where it hurts anything.
Yeah.
Uh, but, but again, we're just advising, they might, the commissioners may have something totally different up their sleeve.
So, where, where are we now? We need to move on.
Where, the acreage thing is.
What I've got is the, uh, remove the five mile, uh, regulation.
True.
The, uh, the fifty acre minimum is going to twenty acre minimum.
I think that was said.
He said ten, Mr.
Ten?
I said twenty. Then we have, all right, fifteen, right between us, that works, fifteen.
Fifteen.
Get it done, it's getting late.
Yeah, get it done.
Fifteen acre?
Yeah, just get it done.
I live in Grover, we gotta get it done.
The sixty day?
No, yeah, no limitation on the percentage of the cabins, the sixty day closing period, and a maximum number of campsites is two hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everyone a good with that, you good with that one?
I'm, I'm good with that.
Mr. Hurley, would you like to make that in the form of a motion?
I think Lori needs to make it, she's been taking the notes.
Everything you said in the form of a motion.
I'm not allowed.
Can you read it out again? I'll make the motion that we.
You did our job.
Uh, 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 let's see, remove the five mile buffer from the regulation, um, the fifty acre minimum, uh, becomes now a fifteen acre minimum per project. Uh, no limitation on the percentage of cabins, um, there, instead of a thirty day period, uh, you're now recommending that become a sixty day closing period and a maximum of, uh, two hundred and fifty, uh, campsites per campground.
Perfect.
Yeah. That's the motion for approval, but you add those things she just talked about in there.
Can we read all this? Okay, so I go through, okay. So, let's see, I move that we approve the twenty-one dash twenty-nine because the request is consistent with the land use and development goal, number ten, and policy ED one of the two thousand and six land use plan. The board must include suggested changes and such changes were just read, do we don't, read it, read them again or do we have them? And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because the request is reasonable and in the public interest by providing language to allow for a greater variety of tourist-oriented businesses and visitor accommodations to locate within the county.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
Have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, well, that was some.
All right, well, that was some work.
Can I make a motion to take a break?
Yes, do we have, yes. We will, we will take a ten minute break. All right, we will call a meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda is P B twenty-one dash twenty-seven H two O B X, a text amendment to allow seasonal employee housing for tourist oriented businesses located on the same principal lot as the business with a minimum lot size of five acres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will talk fast and furious. Just a little general background, um, and history on the project. Um, this is a text amendment, so it applies countywide. Um, but some background on the project, the board of commissioners did approve a conditional general business zoning district um, on May second, twenty sixteen. Um, that approval did include, um, an area that would encompass some dormitory type buildings. Um, in order for those dormitory buildings to be built, um, a text amendment would be required to allow those in a general business zoning district. So that's why you're seeing the text amendment. We are updating the language to change that from dormitory since that, that customarily you would think is educational facilities. And so we're calling the seasonal employee housing. Um, and, um, this would be applicable to all businesses that meet the criteria set forth in the, uh, language that the applicant is proposing. Um, their request in general, um, you will see, um, chapter ten, the applicant is requesting to amend just for clarification that, um, seasonal employee housing is allowed as an accessory use um, in an outdoor recreation facility, which the water park is. Um, and speaking of accessory use, what that means is the principal use, um, the business would have to be on the property before the seasonal employee housing could be built. So when you look at the table of common accessory uses, you see where we're, the applicant is adding seasonal employee housing that would be allowed with a conditional zoning, um, and only in the general business zoning district. And then that takes us to more specific requirements that the applicant is proposing. Um, that the employee housing be limited to tourist oriented businesses, that they provide their annual occupancy date, that the housing be located on the same principal lot as the business with a minimum lot size of five acres, that it be inhabited only during the tourist season for the residence, for the residential use of unrelated, unrelated persons employed on the site for the duration of the tourist season. And, and this has a little tweet just to match our U D O language, um, that the use of class B and class C manufactured homes and just think single wide when you see that instead of, um, just manufactured homes. Travel trailers, campers, tractor trailers, recreational vehicles or similar vehicles as a seasonal employee housing unit is prohibited. Um, and then there is the allowance, uh, the requirement for, um, parking for those units. The applicant is proposing the definition for seasonal employee housing, that the property is used seasonally for the residential use of unrelated persons employed by the business and located on the same site of the business for the duration of the tourist season. Also defining tourist oriented business as a business that is usually seasonal in nature catering, catering primarily to tourists. If a business could equally be catered to either by tourist or local residents, it is included within this definition. And I will say with those definitions, we did work with the economic development director and, um, the tourism director helped us with those as well. Um, I'm not going to read this to you because you have these in your packet. Um, while the U D O does, I'm sorry, the land use plan doesn't specifically speak to workforce, workforce housing. There are some, um, general policies that speak to economic development. And you'll see there's those there is E D one, E D two, and E D three. And, um, just a staff commentary, and we did talk about it, uh, at the work session that, um, one of the biggest, um, needs that Larry Lombardi Economic Development, Economic Development Director sees is the ability to house employees necessary to run our tourist oriented business. And I can say from a planning perspective, that's probably one of my most frequent calls. Um, staff does recommend approval of the request as submitted and suggests the text amendment is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the land use plan, including those that mentioned earlier. Um, and that the text amendment, um, is consistent with that land use plan because it allows for housing for the volume of employees necessary to run and expand a tourist oriented business in targeted growth areas and allows for continued economic growth of a tourist industry. And that the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it addresses a need for tourist oriented businesses to be able to provide housing for seasonal employees in order to operate businesses for tourists and local residents alike. Um, this is the text amendment review standards in the U D O that I'll leave up for your consideration while you're deliberating the case, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
I, I, one thing in our work session, I, I think I have written down here, they said they, uh, they were proposing ten units now. Uh, the water park?
Yes, they have, um, when we get into the more specific case of the water park, you'll see their site plan is currently proposing ten, ten units. This is for the text amendment that would apply countywide.
Any other questions? Anyone here to speak for the applicant? Any questions? If no questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval for P B twenty-one dash twenty-seven H two O, uh, B X because the request is consistent with the two thousand and six land use plan because it allows for housing for the volume of employees necessary to run new and expanding tourist oriented bus, oriented businesses and targeted tourist growth areas and allows for continued economic growth of our tourist industry. Uh, parents' policies, pop, policies, E D one, comma, E D two, comma, and E D three parents. The request is reasonable and in public interest because it addresses a need, need for tourist oriented businesses to be able to provide housing for seasonal employees in order to operate businesses for tourists and local residents alike.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second?
Got it. Tom said I could have it.
Mister, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ayes have it. All right, next item on the agenda is P B sixteen dash O five H two O B X L L, LLC. Amended C G B zoning request to provide temporary seasonal employee housing units at the water park located at eighty-five twenty-six Karatoke Highway, map one twenty-four lot one thirty-seven L Poplar Branch Township.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Now, this is site specific to the water park. Um, just to give you a zoomed out version of the water park there at the southern end of the county, you can see, um, the Wright Memorial Bridge down here. A little bit zoomed in, some new aerial photography that we wanted to show off, um, from twenty twenty. You can see, um, the actual ride slides and all of that there and the parking area here. And keep in mind, when I go forward, you'll see where the temporary housing is going to be proposed. You can see that the area is, I touched it. You can see where the area is zone conditional general business. It's full service in our land use plan. This area, can you see that mouse up there? Is the general area that was reserved for permanent employee housing, um, which was called dormitories on a previous plan. Um, it, basically a placeholder, a master plan gives you a general, um, bubble map of where certain items are going to go. So they're still planning to build these permanent, um, seasonal employee housing units. But in the meantime, to get them through this tourist season and perhaps the, uh, next tourist season, they're proposing temporary employee housing, which would be these units next to this parking area. Um, so when, um, this was approved by the board of commissioners, this conditional zoning district, again, um, the, it was called dormitories at the time were approved. Um, and all the uses that are on the property at the time were approved with that conditional G B zoning district, and none of those uses will change, which triggering this amended, um, conditional G B request is that temporary seasonal employee housing. Um, the applicant is requesting that the units be allowed to stay until the end of the tourist season twenty twenty-five or until permanent seasonal housing has been constructed. Um, they're, um, saying that only employees of the water park will be allowed to reside in the seasonal employee housing. Um, the land use planned, um, policies that the board of commissioners found consistent at the time of adoption of the original conditional general business zoning district were the economic development policy, um, that spoke to, um, new and expanding industries. Um, expo, the one, E S one that spoke to, um, growing the county's water system. And then, um, M L four that spoke to, um, businesses, um, that had a regional impact, not just necessarily Currituck County, but a regional economic impact, um, and primarily located on the highway. With a conditional zoning districts or amended conditional zoning district, only conditions mutually agreed upon by the property owner and the county, um, can be imposed on the property. The applicant has proposed several conditions that the county agrees to. There's one that the applicant has proposed that the county is asking to tweak, and then two additional ones that the county is asking to add that the property owner would have to agree to. The, um, two agreed upon conditions, number one, all proposed development will be consistent with and currently allowed in the general business zoning district. Only employees of the water park will be allowed to reside in the seasonal employee housing. Um, and then the conditions, um, the condition that was proposed that we're asking to tweak, um, is um, the next section, it says temporary seasonal employee housing will only be allowed until the end of the tourist season twenty twenty-five or until a permanent seasonal, um, housing has been constructed. And what staff is suggesting that's added there, whichever is earlier, so the end of the tourist season twenty twenty-five or until permanent seasonal, um, housing has been constructed, whichever is earlier. So that way, these temporary units don't become permanent units. We know that's not their intention, but we also know that sometimes those things happen. Um, we're asking that the language that you just adopted in the text amendment be incorporated. Um, and that would be that class B or C manufactured homes, again, think single wides, um, travel trailers, campers, recreational vehicles or similar vehicles as seasonal employee housing unit is prohibited. And then we don't even need number three, but that was that the text amendment, um, passed that you, um, well, I guess we do need it, that the board of commissioners adopt that text amendment that you just recommended approval of. Um, the technical review committee does recommend approval of this request as it is consistent with the land use plan because it allows for housing for the volume of employees necessary to run new and expanded tourist oriented businesses and targeted growth areas and allows for continued economic growth of the tourist industry. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it addresses a need for tourist oriented businesses to be able to provide housing for seasonal employees in order to operate businesses for tourists and residents alike. Um, these are the review standards for conditional zoning as outlined in the U D O that the board can use to, to guide their deliberations, and with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Jamie, you, he, going, going back to the issue I mentioned before out of place about they were planning ten units at this point?
Yes, this site plan is showing ten units.
And what, what does a unit consist of?
I'm gonna ask the applicant to come up in and help us with that.
Sure. I'm Mike Strater. I'm an engineer with Quiet One Associates, the engineer of record for the conditional rezoning application submitted for you this evening. So the, similar questions were asked at the, uh, community meeting that we held, and the answer that, that ownership provided was, because it was all about trying to figure out, quantify the number of, of seasonal employees that may be in this temporary housing, and the number was up to forty. So ten units, doing the math, it sounds like up to four per unit.
To, to bounce off of that, I mean, would y'all be building like a small stick unit, not stick built units or?
We would, we would need to because we, it, it can't be, um, the, the style that you heard of class B C manufactured structures. So that, uh, to be transparent, uh, the owner was looking, they started really shopping for pre-manufactured units. But we, we do need, we're cognizant of the recommendation. We'll, we'll.
And there are manufactured homes that would be allowed by ordinance, a class A, which you can think of like as a double wide or some of the other manufactured homes that you see. Some people call them modulars that come in on a frame and are pieced together as well.
At this point, when you build permanent housing, are, are you still thinking about for forty employees or you have no, I mean?
It'd be a larger number.
Okay.
Can't remember if we specified a quantity on the, but it, it would be greater than, this is an immediate need for the upcoming season.
As far as the permanent housing, just a ballpark number, not, none, what were y'all looking at?
Goodness, she caught me off guard with that just because I hadn't been thinking about permanent housing for a while. I think it was double. It was about double, but, because that was forty, so.
Y'all would be tracking this to ma, I mean, so only employees of the water park would be residing there?
Absolutely.
Not their kids or family members?
No, and, and I think, um, part of that language speaks to unrelated members in, in a unit. And quite frankly, I mean, that, it's pretty obvious that it's, the intent is, because the, the J one program is reopening. The intent is J one.
So, and I know you're not the owners, you may not be able to answer this question. Do you know about how many, I mean, I know several people that work at the water park seasonally. Do you know about how many employees? And I know at the end of the season, all the college kids leave and they're looking for employees. So just to help feel their need to understand, um, do you know about how many employees they need to stay functioning and?
I don't have that information on me, but I, I, I can speak to the information that we discussed at the community meeting, and that is, and you, you probably all understand the need and reason for the application, but yes, it, the water park actually suffered reduced hours and they actually, some of the major attractions, like the Lazy River, for instance, were closed while other units were open. But due to.
Yeah.
Yes, we're, we're fortunate, or the water park is fortunate to, to retain our local student workers.
That's still a goal.
That is a goal. That is absolutely a goal, but they can't, they can't provide a hundred percent operation. So yeah, we, we hope that we'll be able to maintain functionality of the entire park. Hopefully, one day the expanded park, um, for the complete season, actually, the season was even cut short.
And was the complete season?
I think it was Memorial Day to write out Labor Day.
Uh huh.
I have a handwritten note that it says it can be up to a hundred employees that would need housing. For the permanent housing, yeah. That was from a, a handwritten note from a TRC meeting. And sewer would dictate a lot of that as well.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on the matter? If not, um, we will entertain a motion.
I'm, I'll make a motion. I move to recommend approval of PB sixteen dash oh-five, H two O OBX, or, excuse me, H two OBX, amended conditional GB zoning district with agreed-upon conditions because the request is consistent with the land use plan, plan policies, ED one, ED two, ED three. And the request is reasonable and in the public interest because it addresses a need for tourist-oriented businesses to be able to provide housing for seasonal employees in order to operate businesses for tourists and local residents alike.
May I interrupt and ask one question?
Yeah.
Is the property owner okay with the conditions that we asked for?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. And I believe that concludes the items on our agenda. Are there any announcements?
Yes, thank you, Vice Chairman. I just have a couple announcements. Wanted to keep you updated on a few things that are going on in the Planning Department. Um, in the Board of Commissioners meeting, uh, this past month, uh, the next phases of FOST, six through nine, and the Flora subdivision, um, the special use permits were approved by a three-to-two vote. Um, you know, as you know, uh, or may have heard, there was very lengthy discussion about school capacity and adequate public, uh, facilities, um, you know, with Moyoc Elementary, Moyoc Middle, and Shawboro Elementary being at capacity. Um, that's what the conversation centered around. Uh, in the end, it was, uh, voted for approval. Um, FOST Phase One A up at the front, the final plat has been approved, so you're gonna eventually start seeing some buildings go up. They put the landscaping in. What you're gonna start seeing is, uh, are the townhomes right at the entrance, and then some single families. But that will, uh, we're not sure exactly when they're moving. They have submitted for building permits, but, uh, they have a few hurdles left to get through there. But you'll start seeing that come up. Uh, also, at the Board of Commissioners, the Royal Farms down in Grandy was approved. Uh, their Royal Farms has two-hundred-and-fifty locations across the country, and this will be the first one in North Carolina. So, uh, they're coming on in. And, uh, keep you updated on the county manager search. Uh, we had a, a meeting with the search firm. Uh, they hope to have the position filled, hopefully, what Larry may. They're saying the firms process, they have a two-to-three-month process where they're gonna vet out applications. Uh, the firm goes through an interview process, uh, eventually gets it down to a few candidates that they'll give to the board, and then there will be an interview process with our board. So, that, that's rolling, and the goal is to get someone in place in the spring. So, that's what's, uh, that's a real quick over, overview of what we've got going on in planning.
Thanks for the update.
Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Have a motion and a second? All in favor, rise.